Twenty-six West Main Street in Ramville, Texas. Thursday, October twenty-fourth and twenty-fourth at ten a.m. for the purpose of discussing the following items. During this course of meeting, any discussion of any item, the agenda should be on executive or closed session. Willis County Commissioners should convene in this executive or closed session in accordance with Section five-five-one point oh-one of Texas Department Code. Showing final action, final decision, file what be required in the opinion of Willis County Commissioners' court with regards to any matter considered in such close or executive meeting or session. Then the final decision, file ought to be either in the open meeting covered by an notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting, or at a subsequent meeting of the Willis County Commissioners' court upon notice thereof as the county so determines. So with that, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Madam Chief Deputy Clerk, could you establish a form, please?
Yes, sir. And we should proceed one.
Present.
We should proceed two.
Present.
We should proceed three.
Present.
We should proceed four.
Present.
And the county judge.
Present.
You have one.
We go to number three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Do you mean standing? Lord, thank you for this day. We ask that you guide our paths today. I, we ask that you guide our thoughts, our words, and our actions. Please be with us throughout the day and help us navigate wherever comes our way. Amen.
Amen.
Maybe see. Go to line item number four. Please copy comments. Twenty-eight, nine. We go to line item number five is approve of claims.
The Law Works Collaboration Center, please enter a conference ID and press pound. You will now be placed into the conference. You are the first participant in the conference. To turn off the music, press pound, press star for help.
So move to approve of claims, Judge.
Second motion by Commissioner, and a pause second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature by Mr. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number six, discussion and action to authorize county judge to sign contract. Your first answer is needed and today you voted for the employee appreciation dinner. Action required, Commissioner, for this is, is the ye- the yearly employee event that we have uh, early to mid-December. And uh, because it needs to be uh, worked on or planned. We're waiting for. They're asking that, how we do it, we do every year.
Have we decided on what day the dinner will be, Judge?
Uh, we're trying to decide between the fourteenth and the twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Paper?
That'll be good, but okay. Uh, that would be my suggestion. Uh, so move to approve, Judge?
I have a motion by Commissioner, and a pause second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature by Mr. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number seven, discussion action to approve and discuss when to issue longevity manual checks for the Willis County County action required. Commissioner, I think this comes up every year. My take on it has always been to have separate checks for the longevity. But when it comes to uh, the effort in payroll, it makes more sense to just add it to that bi-weekly payroll.
Yes.
So that's uh, and I think that's what we've been doing.
Yes, sir, for Cassie.
Nevertheless.
So our payroll will be on, I can tell you right now. But the December payroll, it'll run, I believe, on the thirteenth. That's the payroll date. When uh, the first payroll in December. And then that's um, maybe all through the long, the longevity checks to be paid. And then agree, it would be in that payroll if you want.
Okay, so on uh, based off of the two dates that Cassie mentioned, employee would have already gotten paid?
Right, ahead. If it's on the fourteenth, it's one day ahead. If it's on the twenty-first, it'd be about a week.
Okay. Well, that's good. Alright. So can I entertain a motion?
So move to approve, Judge?
I have a motion by Commissioner, and a pause second.
Again.
So, and I'm sorry.
Judge, I'm, just for clarification, Judge, you're approving to issue manual checks?
If you're gonna go with a approval of the longevity with the first payroll of the December month, uh-huh, it wouldn't be a manual check. It just comes with your payroll.
Yeah, do it on this.
It would be good with that.
Right, but the way Ms., you know, also saying if you're doing a manual, it means we'll probably do it separately.
Right.
A physical manual check.
The way the agenda reads is the manual check, so that's issuing a check.
What is easier? It's easier to do on payroll, right?
On payroll, yes. But if y'all can, in the motion state, it's not a manual, it's more of like, the longevity checks paid.
To be included with the first payroll for the month of December.
Okay, so I need to amend my motion, Judge?
Okay.
I amend my second.
Okay, sorry. Alright, so.
Uh, make a motion to, to approve the longevity checks to be issued out on the payroll for uh, December?
The first.
The first payroll December?
Yes.
Any other motion by Commissioner?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, signature by Mr. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number eight, discussion consideration to approve payment monthly utility water bill to North Alamo Water Supply Corporation for the Lasada Fire Department to be paid from the Lasada Community Fund. Action required.
Judge, I played that on the agenda. And uh, the thing is that, that party department Lasada's been off for quite a bit. And it's a shame that they have a running truck and everything. Uh, they haven't, they're in that department, but Ramville's helping out now. And they're going in and they repaired the truck and they got everything going. It's already having a fire truck ready there in the Lasada area. So I said, I'm suggesting that we pay the water bill from the Lasada Community Fund, or the capital fund. It has the money received from Aziz Valley and for that community. So I think it's a win-win situation for everyone. For the fire department here in Ramville as well as the one in Lasada. And the community as well. So I'm want to approve to pay the water bill from the Lasada Community Fund, which is forty-three, four hundred, three seventy-five?
Forty-three, fund, four hundred.
Three seventy-five.
That's community improvements. It was just, you can just say the fund, uh, forty-three.
Forty-three?
Yes.
Okay, fund forty-three.
Uh, may I add a clarification? I hadn't had a chance to speak to Commissioner Gara.
Yes.
Um, and I'm pretty sure y'all know, but we do pay the Lasada Volunteer Fire Department light bill under uh, administration uh.
Is it being paid?
Yes.
Is it disconnected?
The light bill is. We have payments.
Well, okay, and then we don't need it.
But the light bill, not the water.
Not the water bill.
Yeah, that's, that's what I just wanna, you know, clarify.
That, that's the bill you have?
This is the light, not the water.
But have we been paying the light?
Yes, sir.
Cause it, it disconnected that?
No, I didn't know that. I don't know.
Anyway, I'll follow up on that. Yeah, I'll check it. Okay, and then we will start paying the water bill.
But right now currently, the light bill is being, and it's not, it's very low. It's like eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Um, that one's.
No, cause I, it's on the next, uh, the gym, Idaho.
Oh, yeah? Okay.
Yeah.
And so that has been getting paid out of the general fund, um, administration.
You wanna continue paying that? Well, we'll talk about that when we get to the money value fund.
You know, like, and I agree with you as far as the payments and stuff, but I wonder, do you know if Alamo would waive that?
I don't know. I think, I don't think they're charging any. Right now, we speak. Yeah, but I just wanna get there so we can, they do. I, the other, I think North Alamo was not charging any. No, because who's gonna, who, that's been shut down forever and they still have water. You know what I mean?
Yes, I do.
But I just wanna make.
Make sure that there's funds for, for that not to be shut off.
Yeah, that's what I'm. So I'm want to approve, Judge, to pay it up on forty-three?
I have a motion by second. More discussion? All in favor, signature by Mr. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number nine, discussion act to approve the purchase of a shredder not to exceed thirty thousand to be paid from precinct one budget. Administration equipment less than five, over five hundred. Action required.
That does, I played that on the agenda. And uh, my shredder's zero, over twelve years old, both of them. And I've been uh, doing a lot of maintenance on them and a lot of money going into them. Our mother, my, they should retire maintenance. And I have both of them that's out right now. And they're not worth fixing them anymore. And we really do need a shredder. So I'm just asking provision for community school because it's over twenty-five thousand.
So move to approve, Judge? I have a motion by Commissioner, and a pause second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion?
Judge, I'm sorry, I just add real quick, um, and if uh, the Commissioner, you know, the, right now currently, there is no purchasing, you know, agent, so y'all, every department is responsible for their own purchasing. So just um, as a recommendation, you know, try to get three quotes just for you, for your, you know, sake that you actually did your.
Oh, I think about go with a buy board.
Or, that's the easiest. That was my second comment. The easiest is to go with the buy board, so you don't, you avoid all of that research. So um, that was just gonna be my question. So if, if you find a better deal, just keep that in mind. Uh, but the buy board is, is the safest way, cause they do all that work for you.
So do we have an amount that we have to bring to Commissioners' court?
There is no amount, but I strongly recommend, you know. You do as a transparency and, and for better practice, that you are, you know, providing the best benefit for the dollar amount that you are purchasing.
And uh, the reason I bought it because, since I'm not gonna be County Commissioner in January, that's the main reason. Because I need a note, that you guys know, you guys gotta give permission, you're buying it.
Correct.
Cause it's over twenty-five thousand. And there is a, the statute, and I was talking to Commissioner Garcia about it, is that the county can purchase something, just one item, in one, one year. And, and that means that if, like, we were talking about the shredders. He, he wanna purchase one too. Okay, if he beats me to the punch, then I gotta go out for bids or buy the buy board. Or if, for example, if I buy a truck, this year, I'll write out, buy it, hundred fifty thousand dollars. You, I have a statute there in my office.
Right, yes, it's better.
Under or over?
And I'm glad you brought that, cause I didn't know.
But you can only buy one item for the whole county. That means if the sheriff buys a shredder before you do, you can buy a shredder. You gotta go, uh, do the, the way, uh, either go out for bids.
Or go through the buy board.
Or go through the buy board, yes. Because uh, yeah, the state, that happened, that statute came out about six years ago. Yeah.
That's good to know. And also, like, you can all, if the Commissioner was thinking of buying a shredder as well, maybe y'all can do together, buy two, you know? Um, do it with that contract or um, to aggregate it, so that the, the, y'all get the best uh, the best price and the best uh, um, how, what is it? The best uh, I believe it's the best price.
But uh, usually never works. He probably want one different than I want.
Well, we, I'll show you my quotes that I have.
Or maybe his could also be the best, Commissioner?
Yeah, I can get them.
Unless on the buy board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the thing is, it's very difficult because you're gonna get quotes and, and some shredders have this, they're different in a different way. So you're gonna say, we're gonna charge you a thousand dollar mark, so you don't got an extra bill. Then the other guy gonna say this, you know what I mean?
Right, right, that's why.
It's difficult.
It could be, but I don't know what y'all, if we're looking into something. Y'all can talk about it. If it happens to be, you know, whatever is best for each person.
Yeah. So we, I'm want to approve, Judge?
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature by Mr. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number ten, discussion and approval to open a new account for the Magic Body Electric Corporation for the South Fire Department to be paid from the South Community Fund. Action required. This is basically the same, but uh, like I'm saying that we do.
We have it.
Yes, right now, um, and I haven't seen that, I haven't overlooked that one, but I have it here. Um, it's already being paid, but it's, I mean, if y'all want to go ahead and remove it from admin, um, because this is saying it would be from fund forty-three.
I'll just approve, Judge.
Yeah, but I think for now, my opinion would be to leave it as is. And in particular, because uh, as you know, those departments are volunteer. And I think that um, it, it's, it's hard enough in itself to get it going again and then to add. Cause.
You have to change the calendar.
Just to leave it, leave it as is and see. Yeah, just, just a quick question about that. Sebastian Volunteer Fire Department is kind of the same vote. Are we doing the same thing, or hopefully?
I would have to reach out to someone.
Same funds?
How, how the management does.
Might wanna look at that.
Yes, sir, Sebastian.
Yeah, well, but that, that's a different scenario. To begin with, there's no fund like there is in Lasada, so it would be, it would be either from the volunteer fundraising efforts or from the county. There's, I'll, I'll just get, if it's paid by the county, then maybe the same funds, I guess. But you're saying Lasada's is a different matter because they have. They have that fund which Commissioner's asking that it gets pulled down there, but I'm saying just as it is. Down, which is from.
General fund.
Annual, yeah. Alright, so table order? But Commissioner?
Second, move to third.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to table. Can you entertain a second?
Third.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. More discussion? All in favor, signature by Mr. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eleven, discussion action to approve to hire for part-time intake clerk position for the Willis County District Attorney's Office through nine-thirty at twenty-twenty-five to be paid for one. Two, uh, two-two-zero.
Judge, that's the um, Senate Bill twenty-two funds, excuse me. The uh, uh, later on in the agenda is to approve, accepting the uh, rural prosecutor's grant that was already awarded. And then, but I need to do this in order to be able to do a budget amendment for November. So uh, I still have some funds left over. It would be to rehire the person that was doing the job before, but um, in a temporary position. It's just basically file clerk, helping with just getting our cases um, ready and streamlining everything we do in the office. So one hundred percent of that would be coming from uh, fund two-twenty.
Two-twenty. And you have a motion to approve. What's our, uh, motion, Commissioner Garcia? Second. Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature by Mr. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item uh, number twelve. Discussion action to authorize the purchase of a dump truck, VIN number two-F-Z-H-C-H-D-C-six-six-one-V-nine-six-five-three-five. For Willis County precinct four in a month, and five thousand to be paid from account number six-four-four-zero-zero-three-eight-nine. Management equipment over five hundred. Uh, paid, paid through claim section required. Judge, I placed that on the, on the agenda. I had been budgeting since this summer. I budgeted, actually, fifty thousand for, for a dump truck. Not knowing if I could get a used one or a new one for that price, probably just to use. And uh, fortunate enough to kind of fall into, to play with a, a, a local individual that had a really good dump truck, you know, for sale. We had it checked by, by mechanic, and he, he's, he's very mechanic these days. And actually, he gave us a quote, it's a twenty-five thousand. It's described as a two thousand and six Sterling dump truck with a VIN number we read out. It's got a hundred and fifty-eight thousand miles, which is very low. Uh, it's a dump truck fifteen yard. It's got a C-seven Caterpillar engine. The model is called Actera. I went ahead and got two more quotes that I got online, for available here, if I wanna see them. The first quote is a very similar vehicle. It had two hundred and forty-two thousand miles, which is a Sterling dump truck fifteen yard, number forty thousand. And then I got a, it was actually a pretty good truck. And then I found another dump truck for sale at one of these uh, uh, truck sites. It had seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, and they wanted thirty-four thousand. So I really think that, one, it's local. I think this is the best one to go with. You know, what we haven't known, we're getting. Uh, my, my dump truck driver was, was very, very satisfied with what we have now. We currently have a ninety-eight with about seven hundred thousand miles. It still runs. We don't have it in air conditioning. It's missing a window. But this would be a very, very much of, of an upgrade for, for us and for our employees. I want you to approve this.
Second.
Yeah, I want you to make a motion to approve, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? Real quick, I wanna make sure, through claims, right?
Yeah, it's already included and.
So I wanna make sure.
It's today's approved already, but I, in case I had doubt, we could've gone back, but yes.
Okay, alright. So uh, I have a motion in a second. If you, you guys, for Commissioners' court.
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature by Mr. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. I have a thirteen, discussion possible action to approve uh, a sufficiency of funds letter committing nineteen thousand nine fifty-four in addition, in additional local funds to the Texas Water Development Board FIM project four-zero-zero-nine-four Lasada Gate project possible action required. Rebecca, are you on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Alright. So on, on uh, this, Lasada Gates uh, project, I know it's a, it's, it's a smaller project compared to the other six or seven. You wanna do to it?
So we currently in the construction budget, uh, only have, we currently only have sixty-five thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars budgeted for construction, uh, which is, as you said, a small amount. Um, we, on the second uh, bid that we did, we only received one bid from Texas, Florida, and it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over budget. Um, I believe the county is wanting to move forward with uh, awarding alternate C and D um, including the mobilization and erosion control. So in total, that would be eighty-five thousand five hundred. Um, so for us to be able, um, or for the county to be able to do that, that we need to add an additional local fund of nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Okay, and, and so Commissioners, obviously, okay, when you, you tell me, Rebecca is that? So this would not be coming out from the, either the grant portion or the loan portion, correct?
Correct. This would be coming from uh, the county.
Right.
Fund.
Right. So Commissioners, as you know, in different projects, especially huge ones, right? Uh, where there is uh, logic points towards not having to redo the agreements and contracts. If at all possible, we tap into uh, the capital fund uh, on, on minor adjustments and expenses having to do with funding. This is one case as well. On a sixty-five thousand dollar project, we're needing the nineteen thousand nine hundred. Uh, I think it makes sense for us to, to uh, tap into the uh, the capital fund for that. On the, correct me if I'm wrong, Maria, but it would be on the management equipment over five hundred.
Yes.
That's where we handle.
Right.
Move to approve, Judge?
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve. Can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature by Mr. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. What, what, what was the total amount of that, correct? It was uh, sixty-five thousand five forty-six, correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca? And it's going up to.
Yes.
Eighty-five thousand five hundred. With the additional nineteen nine.
But you only have a project that I have in the project. And the reason I did it, because it gives my, the prison employees in great danger when they have a pit. We have to go in there and close the gate with the back hole. They have to get on a bucket to close it, they have a, when that drains all the waters, and that's why I do it. Because it keeps my employees out of danger. When we get those floods.
Safety issue.
Yeah.
So we have electronic gates?
Yeah, well, we're gonna place those slabs. So, we don't have to do that anymore. Or they, or we're not gonna have to worry about that anymore. Cause you know, that area, what happens, the water, once a year, high pressure, not going in, it's coming out.
Unit.
Mm-hmm.
I have a motion in a second. More discussion? All in favor, signature by Mr. Aye. And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number fourteen, discussion act to approve advertising of a bid for the Willis County Heritage and Wellness Center, CDBG, CD, TD, HCA, CRP project number C-seven-zero-eight-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-one-four. Action required.
Howdy, Judge, Commissioner. Good morning. How are y'all?
Good to see you.
Well, we're here. Uh, we've been presenting this project. Let me, uh, give you guys some handouts real quick. What I'm handing out to you is the advertisement for bids. That's the first page. The bid form, uh, which is in the full set of construction documents, um, contract documents. Uh, that's the next portion of it, and then I pulled out a portion of the uh, construction drawings, similar to what I had brought, uh, last time I was here, about a month or so ago, a couple months back. Um, that show kind of the uh, the outside views, the elevation views of the building, and then also show the footprint in some of the square footages. I have some hand comments in there on some of the square footage of the buildings. And um, and then we also have some of the layouts of that main civic space, uh, and how many folks can fit in there seating-wise on the different layouts. And so, um, certainly feel free to look through that, and while you're doing that, I'm gonna give y'all some dates that um, we're hoping to get approval from you today. So if approved today, this project will be placed on CivCast. I'm not sure if y'all have used CivCast before, but it's a uh, it's a bidding website, not a bidding website necessarily, but it's a, a website to get the plans and the contract documents out to bidders. Um, it will go out in CivCast. There are several plan houses that have CivCast as part of their network. They'll pull those plans in. Contractors also uh, are able to get it. It's an online bidding and clearinghouse for construction documents. And so we find it a good way to get the word out to as many contractors as possible. Uh, so we will be putting it out on CivCast uh, tomorrow, if approved today. Um, and then we also are, are required to have it publicly advertised. That's gonna probably be within the local paper. We'll have it publicly advertised for two consecutive weeks. That's part of the requirements of the grant. And so we will, uh, I believe, uh, Monday, we, is it Monday we get it to the newspaper, and then Wednesday or Thursday?
It'll print on Wednesday.
So it'll print on Wednesday, so it will be printed on Wednesday. Uh, I believe that's the thirtieth, and then the sixth, so that will be in the newspaper then. And then we will have a pre-bid meeting here locally. It will be live. Um, we will uh, invite all the contractors here. We'll have the architect and some of my other engineers here to discuss any questions and to just kind of go through uh, the project itself. That will be November thirteenth. Uh, we'll schedule that here. Um, and then bidding will be on the Thursday after Thanksgiving to give everybody some time after the uh, the holiday week and weekend. Um, and so Thursday after uh, Thanksgiving is December fifth, so we will be opening, opening bids. Um, and so uh, that's the schedule over the next month and a couple weeks. And um, you know, I hope to be back with you guys with some good news on pricing, of course. Fingers crossed, light the candle. Uh, we, we need some good prices to come in. But I think part of that is putting together a set of good construction documents. I feel like we've done that. We've got to. We've got to find some good, uh, contractors that are interested in this project. That obviously always helps getting in some good prices. And so, um, you know, if there are some folks that, uh, that you guys have worked with, that I need to be reaching out to, we, we can definitely do that. We can make phone calls. We can try and get as many people interested as possible, uh, as possible. And that CivCast, I think, does that as well, as well as the public, uh, advertisement in the paper. Um, and so, um, I'm here to answer any questions y'all may have, uh, trying to start the bidding process and get y'all's approval to move forward with that.
Well, I, I tell you that, uh, I'm excited to be here at this point.
Yep.
You know, we've, we've gone to do a lot to be able to be at this point. Uh, and, uh, hopefully we will get, uh, you know, plenty of bids.
Yep.
Hopefully there'll be, we'll invite.
Judge, you mentioned we've been through a lot, you know? This started in twenty twenty-one, uh, at the end of twenty, or towards the end of twenty twenty-one. And so, it has been a long process. Uh, it is a grant project, and so those things, as you guys know, sitting up here, that never moves quickly. Uh, but, um, you guys have been wonderful. Um, I think we've got a good team and I'm really looking forward to getting in some good bids and good contractor onboard.
Do you have any renderings?
You know, I don't have any renderings. I thought about that as we were coming here. We were kind of working on the process and the dates and everything. I tell you what I am gonna do, though. I am gonna bring y'all some renderings so that y'all can post them up either here or somewhere maybe in y'all's offices of what this will look like. Uh, Commissioner, I think I told you on the last time that I would do that. I haven't done that, but I will do that before, before we do the bids. I'll bring it back maybe the next time, uh, I'm able to come down here. I'll bring y'all some boards with some renderings on them. Maybe at that, uh, pre-bid, I'll be able to bring it down.
Yeah, we can say that.
Yeah.
Well, it, uh, you know, just in glancing through the plans, uh, it's, it's covered. We have discussed for.
Yeah.
For your, and I thank you for being able to, to do as we move forward and make the adjustments.
For the patience. I know it took a lot of patience.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So many changes.
This, well, and, you know, I think this process with that location and everything started a long time ago. Uh, obviously, uh, with your push and, and, and support and the judges as well. And, uh, you know, we, we've been excited and, uh, happy to be a partner, uh, as we've gone through that. So, um, again, looking forward to getting some good, uh, good pricing back. Fingers crossed, lots of prayers and, you know, that's gonna be a big part of it. Um, you know, we've had some changes. We, we added an entire building to it with, uh, with, uh, Texas Animal Health Commission coming onboard as a partner there. And which I think is key. We've talked about it, Judge, having partners out there for the county, for you guys to make that something that's a sustainable, uh, project and complex out there for, uh, for many, many years to come. Yeah.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature, farmers, Aye?
Aye.
And all opposed, same side, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Line number fifteen. Considerations possible action to approve change order number two for the, uh, ARPA parking lot improvement. Uh, ARPA number twenty-three seventy-nine, possible action required. In terms of, you know, uh.
Judge, we have Paulina here?
Oh, yes.
That's gonna present? I have the, I provided the change order with Paulina.
I'm just gonna make a comment that, before Paulina starts that, as you know, this has to do with, in my opinion, right? And I'm biased. Beautiful parking lot. I can't wait to have that thing striped and everything finished. Anyway.
Uh, good morning, Judge Commissioners, Paulina Vega from Hanson Professional Services for the record. Uh, before you is change order number two for the parking lot improvement project. Um, what it's doing, it's increasing the price, uh, by two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for a hundred and twenty-three square feet of additional sidewalk, um, at the island. Um, so it does not increase, uh, the contract base and, uh, we recommend approval.
And let me explain, Commissioner, is, uh, the, the plans call, uh, as you walk up down the steps here in the, in the main door, which is where the traffic is gonna be, pedestrians. Uh, it calls for two, uh, sections, roughly four or five feet by eighteen. And so, that was gonna be, uh, for, um,
Green, so it was a green space.
Landscaping, grass, whatever. I could already see it, bare ground, because for the most part, people, we're, we're gonna go through there. Now, mind me, the effort, the grass, were great. Because, but I think it was too, too much on the way of where the traffic is gonna be, the pedestrians. But I think it was the right move, uh, to, to, to do it now. And so, now, it's all concrete. And so, I think it, I, I thank you for, for doing that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Yeah, I agree.
Quick question.
Sure.
Yes.
Yes, yes, we are.
Can I approach the bitch? No.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, the recommended motions.
This is in the efforts of staying within, uh, the guidelines.
Okay. Motion to approve change order number two for the A R P A, number two, three, seven, nine, parking lot improvement to be paid from fund one, one, four, American Rescue Plan Act.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature, farmers, Aye?
Aye.
And all opposed, same side, motion carries.
Line number sixteen. Discussion action to approve the de-obligated seven thousand three fifty-four sixty-five from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Fund, number, uh, one fourteen. To obligate seven thousand three thirty-four sixty-five to the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, L A T C F, action required.
Yes, this is a recommendation, um, upon behalf of our, our county auditor's office. Uh, we met with our project manager, Miss Alice Mendez, and, uh, this last meeting that we had. And this is, uh, a recommendation for the fiscal oversight of the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, one, one, four, L A T C F, the Local Assistance Tribal Consistency Fund.
Alright. Then I have seen the motions to approve. De-obligating, uh, not to get too much to say, but this is, I guess, uh, left over, I think.
No, we.
No, no, it's, it's, it's just for the fiscal oversight, I apologize. It's just for the management of the funding, uh, because we're already to that point as, uh, just a kind reminder that we have to have this money expended, or at least for the record, uh, before December thirtieth, coming twenty-four. So, um, we met with our county auditor and with our project manager. And, um, this is, uh, was funding that had been obligated for computers and equipment.
Oh.
For the county auditor's office. And so, that is already, that is, uh, the, the, the same amount that we are, that you approve, you de-obligate today will go into the L A T C F. And that purchase can still be made with this funding.
Okay, to motion to approve, make a motion to approve to de-obligate seven thousand three hundred forty-four dollars sixty-five cents from ARPA project number two, two, four, eight, five, for computers, equipment for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Fund, one, one, four. And to obligate seven thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents for computers, equipment for the auditor department to be paid by local assistance and tribal consistency fund, L A T C F.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Can I extend a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature, farmers, Aye?
Aye.
And all opposed, same side, motion carries. Line number seventeen. Discuss, consider selective vendor to complete project implementation with American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA project funding to be issued by the Utah Department of, of the United States Treasury and other federal and state agencies, action required.
Yes, Sarah, this is, uh, this is an obligation approved by the court for a small micro purchase. Uh, we went ahead and we advertised with the approval of the court on September twenty-seventh. And the, the, the small quote, a bid closed on October sixteenth at four P M. The project was scored on Wednesday at, um, October twenty-third. And we did have three, uh, ARPA committee members present. Uh, Commissioner Precedent one, Elizabeth Guerra, Commissioner Precedent four, Ernie Garcia, and representing, uh, Commissioner Committee Number two, Mr. Lucio Espaza. We did only receive one bid, uh, for this, uh, small micro project, sir. And the committee today is making a recommendation for that one bid that was received. It was reviewed, evaluated, and scored. And I did provide you with the recommended motions and that selected, uh, vendor would be Boswell Ella Ford. Do you have any questions?
Make a motion to approve Boswell Ella Ford as a selected vendor for project number two, four, zero, eight, dash, eight. For a, for a twenty twenty-four pickup truck for Wizzi County Coastal Parks, uh, hotel, hotel slash motel to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, Fund one, one, four. For local assistance and consistency fund, L A T C F, depending on fund availability, ability.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia.
Judge, if I can just clarify, did we jump to number eighteen and you didn't do number seventeen? Okay, that's number eighteen.
We're thirty.
But what you're referring to is, is what's out of, so you've approved the, the vendor?
Yes.
Right.
At, at this point.
Yes.
And, and the reason I ask is because it was really not clear for me what was happening on seventeen, because the agenda item needs to be more specific on what we're doing. For transparency purposes, the agenda item only said funding in a project. It just said small micro.
Okay, so.
So, there wasn't enough, i- it just wasn't clear to me what we were doing with that. Uh, the previous one too, we just need to make sure that we're, as, the, the way the motions are being read is perfect. That's what needs to be on the agenda item so that we, we let people know what point it is that you're voting on. And so, I wasn't sure, I didn't realize those two were connected until the motion was read out. I just wanted to make sure that.
And I, I apologize, Mr. Mosa. I do know that this is a way that we've been presenting it throughout the program. But the reason that we escorted that way is because a lot of times work, our schedules of events, in this case, I have to submit the agenda request by a certain time and a certain date. And the bid was just scored, um, yesterday.
Right. And, and, and for, for just for, for clarity and transparency purposes, and we put the project number at least on what, what you're considering? Then, then it connects the two together, that it was not a clear, what, what this one was for until the motion was read out.
You, you are correct. I apologize, the project number is not on this one.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That was my only question, Judge.
Okay, uh, and, but, just to clarify, let's see, we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes, sir.
And the project number is on the motion. Move on.
Yes.
Alright. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature, farmers, Aye?
Aye.
And all opposed, same side, motion carries. Line number eighteen. Discussion action to approve the purchase of ARPA project twenty-four zero eight A, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five pickup truck for Wizzi County Coastal Parks Hotel Motel to be paid by American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Fund, one fourteen, Local Assistance and Consistency Fund, L A T C F, depending on the time of the bid, the action required.
Yes. On, on this, as I mentioned, we only had one bid and it was reviewed and evaluated. And we did come over budget, uh, seven hundred sixty-four dollars. That I will, it will be captured from, from fund forty. So, in other words, the match will be captured from fund forty. Fund forty being hotel motel.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the twenty twenty-four pickup truck for Wizzi County Coastal Parks Hotel slash motel for the total amount of forty-five thousand to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, ARPA slash local assistance consistency fund. And, and the over budget amount of seven sixty-four to be paid from fund forty.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature, farmers, Aye?
Aye.
And all opposed, same side, motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Line number nineteen. Discussion action to consider approve an extension request, uh, affected toll commission funding here. Uh, Commissioners, I, uh, I'm requesting you approve, even though that you all approved me, uh, signing off on any legal document pertaining to the renovation of the courthouse. Uh, I felt that, uh, that I needed to bring this to you guys just to kind of explain, uh, on, on record as to, uh, my, uh, my efforts. And that is that, um, by signing the, 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 the funding agreement, uh, it includes the attachments. And on the attachments, it includes the projected cost of the project, right? Um, and so, I got with the other counties that got selected for total restoration. I spoke to two of the three, right? And just to get information is how they're moving forward with, with the project, right? And so, uh, uh, one of the new things that's happening is what's called, uh, an owner administrator, right? Which is an individual that will be paid funded by the grant, uh, to overlook the project, right? Uh, obviously, in order for us to get an individual that qualifies, uh, we have to advertise and so forth. I'm of the opinion that we need that individual as soon as possible, because that individual will have, uh, oversight of the whole thing. And, and moreover, what I'm learning, in fact, I just learned this, uh, the day before yesterday, is that.
Thank you.
One of the concerns out there, and it's just not on this particular project, is of basically all big projects. Uh, nowadays, uh, it's hard to project a cost because of e- either material being hard to get or the price that it fluctuates, right? So, uh, uh, I'm, I'm learning, uh, this from, from input from, from oth- other judges. And, and I need more time to be able to look into, uh, these, or this particular position. And then it kind of pivoted into another, which is called a construction manager at risk. And on that, what I'm reading is that it's actually, uh, an individual, or perhaps even a company, that guarantees that the projected cost will not go over. Now, I'm assuming that there's probably some type of bonds or insurance coverage, right? I don't know, but I'm researching this. That would be something that I think would be of interest to us to be able to tap into certificates of obligation with the comfort level that we're gonna keep the cost as projected to do this project. So, on the one side, I'm kind of, uh, saying, well, we're delaying, right? But on the other side, I think what, what I'm looking into and discovering is that this might be something that, that would be, uh, that would be good overall. Now, having said that, I made contact with the toll commission to ask for sixty-day extension. And I'll say this in the record, it's not a big deal to them, because they want us to have the, that, uh, mindset or, or, or being the comfort level that we are, uh, doing the financial part of, of, of our commitment, uh, with a more structured or concrete effort. And, and I think that that's, that's my objective, is, is to be able to, to do that. Now, as you know, we already have kind of like the overall, uh, plan as to how we're gonna do this. I think that, uh, it's, it's gonna be a great, great project. I'm excited about it, but I do ask that you, uh, allow me to ask for, uh, this extension of, uh, sixty days.
Motion to approve this. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature, farmers, Aye?
Hi. And all opposed, same sign motion. Here is line number twenty, discussion action to accept Senate Bill Twenty Two, Rural Prosecuting Grant Award Number IA zero 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 one zero five three, action required. Okay, this one is, oh, is this it?
Yes, Judge, this is the Senate Bill Twenty Two. Uh, I attached it. Uh, it already, mine was already awarded um to expire. It it's uh for October first of twenty twenty four through September thirtieth of twenty twenty five, so this is that next um this current fiscal year is funding for Senate Bill Twenty Two, which is our fund two twenty. And so I'm asking uh to accept the award, accept the uh the award. This is one hundred and seventy five thousand U P S for a full-time prosecutor as well as a uh case manager, legal assistant. And uh will be paid for part of that for that part timer as well.
All right. And thi- this is something that we have already discussed in budget workshops upon every.
Yes, sir. And so this is the set, this is a, I don't wanna call it a renewal because I have to apply for it every year. But we did this in the previous fiscal year, so this is a continuation.
No more to approve this.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Vera. Can I give you a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? My favorite signature, five percent A nine. Hi. And all opposed, same sign motion. Here is line number twenty one. Request permission to approve family partition of the lands of Edward Hammond Family Partition. Take three tract family partition of five acres each located on the northeast corner of Lopez Road, County Road Two Hundred South. And F ten seventeen sixty one, wishing one action required. Mister Robert.
Yes, sir. Already got that approved through H C M and hearing. I discussed it with Commissioner Gallow.
All right. And I, and I, uh, watching by Commissioner Vera to approve. Can I give you a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion?
One quick question. Hey, Commissioner, is that a, is that road, is it already like an approved road that it's on or?
Well, the one of the ten sixteen one. Yeah.
They got probably from seventeen.
Yeah, and the other looked a little bit, which I we see is real good news. He's like a paper.
I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? My favorite signature, five percent A nine. Hi. And all opposed, same sign motion. Here is line number twenty two, approve approve of twelve trouble to express, action required.
Yes, twenty four. Travel request for Willacy County, uh, radio get up to the Texas A and B District, well, daily education conference, county officials of December fifth and sixth twenty twenty four and the world Texas. Travel request for deputy county court chair of office, state attorney, county attorney, Texas Association, state administration, uh, for twenty eighth for the November first, twenty twenty four, in Lake Carmo, Texas. Travel request for District Attorney's case protection coordinator, Shiro Habbo, to attend the twenty twenty four L G S research group conference on November twenty and twenty two, for twenty two, twenty twenty four, Irving, Texas, to be paid through half from general fund, half of twenty twenty four. Travel request for Willacy County District Attorney's Department of Justice, coordinator, Maria Gloria, who this to attend the key person personnel and department six coordinator conference on November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, in Chicago, Texas, to be paid through V E D grant, two zero six four one five.
Any more questions or comments? Is there none? Can I make a motion to approve?
Put to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve. Thank you for a second.
Please.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? My favorite signature, five percent A nine.
Hi.
And all opposed, same sign. Uh, Rebecca, are you still there?
I'm happy.
I guess you haven't. I I didn't uh thank her because I didn't know if she was gonna be further down the. Okay, so we go to line item number twenty three, executive session, confer with Commissioner Corleone, cross regard to any kind of litigation or negotiations involving the county control or the agency person to be in the government code section five one one seven one. And deliberation regard to any kind of litigation or change involving the county, as you go into person to be in the city, right? I want uh two. Uh, and we do.
Judge, if 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 you'd like, it, I know it's gonna be set for eleven A M. If you would like to wait until eleven to call that, and then that way.
Then get forwarding mine. I don't know about that.
It's set for eleven. I know it's a few minutes early, so I don't know if you want to adjourn briefly and then.
I'd rather do that.
Or not adjourn, excuse me, recess.
Recession.
Yes, yeah, we'll we'll just wait the the two minutes and and do that. Thank you for your.
Is it the addendum?
Yeah.
This is what's gonna be on the screen. Do you see it or not?
Yeah.
Do you, do you? This is gonna be on the screen. Can you do it? That's what's gonna be. Look, 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 look at that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, this is, we're still recording.
Maybe I teach if you want to go ahead and do that, so I made it, I realized this that.
It was just submitted, right?
We're into the meeting about thirty four minutes, and the contractor and a lot of the.
Well, if you'd like to have that conversation because we're still recording and we're still on here. So on this one, Judge, uh, I haven't been able to, you know, it's considered kind of a uh an addition to the meeting. So you are calling an addendum even though there's there's not anything there, right?
Okay.
Is that three minutes? And then um I can go over including uh language on our regular means that indicate that uh it would include any addendums that you have to, you have to go by the original start date of the meeting. But I don't think that that's clear on our agenda item of when you have to submit it. If it if we're doing addendums uh throughout, it kind of starts separating stuff and brings us back. It's it's its own little section, so I can address that.
All right.
And again, so so just so you know, uh, there's usually not engaging back and forth. It's uh make your, you know, you uh you speak. If there wants to be engaging, that would be up to uh the commissioners, but uh it's usually a an opportunity for somebody to to want to uh address the commissioners and not or not, but my recommendation, my recommendation would be it needed to be terminated at ten. Because both of them were posted, there were postings that showed what time the meeting started. And that at ten, sorry, it needs to be terminated before the meeting, the original meeting started. Judge.
Yes. Mister Salinas, this is a conversation pertaining to your request for uh public comments, right? And um obviously, the public comments, it's on the front of 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 the of the agenda, right, of the meeting. I I understand that you're uh wanted to uh comment on the addendum, right? But I asked.
On the addendum, yes.
Yeah, I asked legal about, there's no public comments on that. What what I wanna do, and here is in the in the effort of balancing transparency and also to make sure that I don't open the doors, right, for future. What what I'm gonna do, Mister Salinas, is I'm gonna do the same as I did last time. Uh, after the meeting, uh, I would gladly get with you and if the engineer doesn't mind, you have questions pertaining to the engineering course, you know? But as far as the the uh public comments, I wanna be sure that I follow what we have uh already in place.
I I don't have a problem with that.
I I know your intentions are.
The uh, the only thing is that addendum is not scheduled for seventy-two hours until eleven o'clock. So I did sign that form prior to that addendum being uh made available to the public.
And and if I could just address that, uh, there's no agenda item over public comments for for the addendum. It's part of the original meeting, which is why we go by the the ten A M meeting. Uh, it's not a separate meeting. It's part of the meeting, uh, and and we can definitely clarify that. But it's always been considered part of the original meeting, which is why my recommendation is is that unless it's a special meeting and a separate meeting, sometimes we have multiple meetings and hearings within even a meeting, then there really isn't yet that opportunity, is both it it should be set before uh the original meeting time starts at first ten.
So that recommendation is for the future?
Well, it's, that's that's how I interpret it. That's that's how it is interpreted.
Where?
Right now. I mean, that's how that is. The meeting, the meeting starts at ten, and addendum is not a separate meeting.
Okay, I understand that, but I'm referring to that you have to sign up uh prior to a meeting.
Right, it's the ten A M meeting.
But where is that?
On the public comments section where you where where you sign in and where you want to put public comments. Uh, I don't know, uh, Mrs., you have the 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 paper over here.
They should have been done.
Right.
Yes.
It's the same formula that we, that 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 was my clarification.
Thank you so much, and let me just uh uh clarify something uh before we move on. And that is that in the in this particular study, right, uh, it's it's a county-wide study. Uh, uh, there is a uh request for an invoice to be paid. I have gotten already the authority from Commissioner's Court to sign off on this particular project. But in this spirit and the effort of transparency and the effort of the engineer updating the Commissioner's Court as to how this particular project is going, uh, I decided to put it uh on the agenda. Unfortunately, that came to mind after we had filed the agenda. That's why I had to do it as an addendum. But there is really uh not a need for us to even have the engineer explain to us in open court. I decided to do that, and I think it's uh, and getting back to, I know you want to make a comment, but uh, Mister Salinas, uh, you you're gonna get, and so is the public. We're on on YouTube. Uh, we're gonna hear as to how this particular project is going with the with the study of the uh of the flooding pertaining to the whole county. Would that go there?
Judge, do you have a still call in your addendum? We have a call.
Can I help you?
I have an opportunity, you're correct. Okay. So a notice here by you know, with the county commissioner's court, hold uh addendum, a special meeting addendum number one at the county judge's office, Commissioner's Courtroom at five seventy six West Main Street in the Realville, Texas, seven eight five eight zero on Thursday, October twenty fourth of twenty twenty four, at eleven A M for the purpose of discussing the following items. During the course of meeting, you discuss any meeting item on the agenda to be known, executive or close session. With the county commissioner's court would convene such executive or close session according to section five five one four oh, one of the Texas government code. To any final action, final decision, or final vote, we require the opinion of the county with regards to any matter considered such close executive meeting or session. Then the final decision, final vote to be either in the open meeting covered by the notice of public meeting or the public meeting or a subsequent meeting of the county upon orders of the county so determined. So with that uh presentation by Goodman and Jones on Willacy County Road and Drainage Water Development Board Watershed Study, category one, project four zero zero two zero. Go ahead.
Uh, Judge, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on on the ongoing project uh that we have. I have on on the screen kind of a little presentation that I put together. Uh, we don't have the PowerPoint available on the screen, so I'm using the PDF, so that's why. Uh, but basically, it's a team of me and and research of lab rates. Uh, they're going to be, as part of this project, going to be installing uh two or three uh gauging stations along, once I finish the study, to see where where's the best solution, where's the best position for these gauging stations. They also got a grant to do other gauging stations throughout the Willacy, Algo, and Cameron County. They'll utilize in their in their overall uh three county watershed study and their and their their efforts to to mitigate and to to keep updated information on rain gauge data. As uh the the region gets uh rainstorms, they'll be able to calibrate the the models and everything using this data as as they move forward throughout the years. And you you will have your gauging stations in your areas, and and that information will also be available um in the future. Basically, this is the standard, the study area is the Willacy County area. Of course, uh, when it comes to watersheds, there's water that that flows outside of the of the actual boundary of of Willacy County. And that's being taken into consideration, obviously, in our study because we have to mitigate for those uh, you know, flood runoffs and those lows when it rains. Uh, basically, we developed an elevation model, which is what's used in these uh models to determine the the flow and characteristics of the watersheds and also uh how the rainfall, uh different storm events uh will uh will be impacted by the elevation model. It, you know, basically, the watershed is about six hundred fourteen square miles. That's what we're studying. There's about ninety-two uh drainage sub-basin that we've created using this model uh to to do sub uh watershed analysis in in the areas of of the of Willacy County to to kind of show you how uh each uh area reacts uh in that area as far as flood events. Uh, each basin is about five square miles. Uh, and the overall system is obviously drained by the North Ringville drain, uh Hartfield drain, the main drain of Willacy County, uh the floodway channel, uh ida channel of the of the city, and then, of course, about twenty-five laterals that are located throughout Willacy County that belong to Drainage District One, Two, and and Willacy County, uh, I mean, the Delta Lake irrigation district. And so those are 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 being studied also within the watershed study. This kind of gives you a layout of of not being analyzed, and and the internal system is not gonna be uh given a direction as to how to improve it to get the water to the ditches. This is more of a regional approach because uh e- every little city would require its own watershed study to mitigate all those uh that infrastructure.
But you are looping into all of the laterals that are involved in draining.
Draining the cities.
Separated.
Well, I think if if I may interject, just to look at that a little bit, this this watershed study is a Willacy County funded watershed study. But there's other watershed studies that Mister Winoz and I have talked about. There's a regional watershed study being conducted by Hapken Associates. And then even, get get with them to see how it 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 impacts the the local cities. I get what you're saying. But yes, his outfalls are gonna be what's collected from the from the three other major cities. Uh, and and this is all driven, with my understanding, by by our opportunities to.
And this is all driven, with my understanding, by our opportunities to get grant funding. They wanna know, you know, how this stuff is going. Now, in addition, and kind of the same, but not the same, I just sent you an email. There's another watershed study that's being done by the US Corps of Engineers. And by being part of the Stormwater Task Force, we're part of that also. So you have a Willis County, you have a regional, then you have a, I'm guessing, there's going to be statewide watershed study. And I think we're gonna advertise it on our website. I know I'm advertising it on my page. And it's a meeting this next, it's gonna be the twenty-ninth, from three-thirty to six-thirty. No, that's Tuesday, I believe, the twenty-ninth. And I'm gonna invite Mr. Munoz to go sit and share with some of these folks from the Corps of Engineers as to what's exactly going on. So there's three watershed studies going on simultaneously. They overlap some, but they will overlap, I would imagine, into these, the way these cities drain. And I don't know that Rainville or Lifeford applied for their own, you know, watershed study.
Rainville did, and Rainville, they did fund it.
They didn't get funded?
No, they didn't.
They did, so somebody's gonna do that?
We did it.
You did, okay.
We're doing it. And so that one was funded to do the internal storm drain system of the city. And, you know, Lifeford can apply for those funds too, and do their own internal storm drain system studies so that they can see how they can mitigate their internal storm drain system to better prevent flooding in their area.
Which I'm guessing is imperative to have these watershed studies, to be able to qualify, to apply for funding. That's what it's all generated by. Is a little bit that I understand?
You are correct. Let me tell you, the last event, it wasn't a hurricane, it was two fronts hit.
The light?
The community of Sebastiana, along with the northern part of Cameron County, got hit the hardest. But I remember residents demanded, we explained what was going on with the world crisis. And back then, State Representative DeN, which was very much involved, you know, he came to the meeting, and Manny was crowded, I don't know if you were there or not, but anyway, the weather forecaster was there and explained, very, very... Anyway, but one of the first things, getting back to what you're bringing up, that Representative DeN pulled me to the side and asked, he says, "Do you have a slide? Do you have a county study, flood study, on the effort of helping us, right, sending funding at the state level, right?" But he was surprised that we did not have one, right? So I'm hoping that this is exactly what he was talking about?
Yes, yes, Judge. This is obviously the first step, and the opportunity came to a lot of communities like yours, because you all don't have the resources. And when the state legislature created the Flood Infrastructure Fund, which was funded by the state with over eight hundred million dollars to help the state and the communities that apply for them, get the funds to do these kind of studies and to do the kind of improvements that we're doing to a lot of your ditches with the fourteen million dollars that we got from the funding source, to mitigate the flooding situations that these communities have encountered throughout many, many years without having the help and the resources to do that. But a study will help plant the ideas and the seeds for future funding when it comes available, so that you can say, "Okay, I have the study. This is the improvements that we need to do to mitigate this flood stage event." And then those funds can be then acquired so that those channel improvements, or those storm drain improvements, or those covert improvements can be done based on the study, so that then we know that the mitigation is gonna happen by doing those changes, those ditches, and covert improvements.
I'm sorry, I look forward to the completion of this, so we can have a presentation because there are more people involved that know that what's going on, or may have questions, that can get answered. You know, because it's gonna happen. And then, you never know, you might get a good suggestion, you know, from somebody. I have some people that come to me on a regular basis. And I'm very particularly want to see the outcome of the Haffin Associates regional study, because it includes Algo and Cameron, and then this one here with the court. And like I said, I'm inviting some people to go.
I'm asking you to.
Sure.
You gotta see the presentation.
So we can be informed as to, you know, what to tell the public, because it itself can ask some very good questions.
There has been a big change in providing all these funds, and I'd say that some are overlapping. Some are seeing it a little different than others as far as the study. I know the one that was funded by the lower Grand Development Council, which is being done by Rakes. Their application included to use, to go through, of course, they have a three-county report, I mean, a study to do. Their application included to look at twenty-five smaller communities individually, and see what kind of improvements. Again, I'm not the engineer on that one, but that was their scope of service.
That's your laterals group?
Yeah. And so they're gonna, I don't know who picked what communities throughout the three counties, but they're going to look at twenty-five smaller communities and see what kind of improvements could be done within those communities based on their study. And so there's an opportunity still, and like I say, you may ask Governor of Rakes to see what communities were picked, you know, to be studied by their watershed study. And maybe one of them or two of them came from Willacy County, I don't know. That's a question that you could ask, and find out if they were chosen. I would think that they would have chosen some from Sebastiana. Haven't been asked for any information, but I've definitely known which ones they're studying. I did kind of throw a seed in that Lifeford is one that should be studied. Because, you know, I know that that's one that needs a study, because it is, you know, the elevations there are really, they are in a hole in certain areas, haven't worked in there in thirty years. You know, and that one, of course, Sebastiana, pretty much have been working on it for many years. Lasada, we also work on it for many years, and I know that it should enhance the flood benefits. And so the improvement, that's why I'm gonna study that one to see what kind of mitigations can be done in the future, being that it belongs to Delta Lake. At least have something that's presentable to them, so that, you know, through the county or through their own services, they can, they can look for funding to enhance the flood protection of that community. And so, and Lasada, of course, you know, I mean, San Perita, we've also been involved with it. And so we've been paying attention to the improvements that are needed there to mitigate the flooding situation. So throughout this, you know, in our history with Willacy County, we know where we can segregate our studies, so that we can look at those areas that we can show in our studies, these are the improvements that are needed to benefit those communities.
Joe, so you have all the work, they've submitted with the money, so we can see?
Nothing.
You have all that?
No, I just thought they have a portal, they have a portal.
But you don't have it, so we can see?
Yeah, you can see it, I mean...
You didn't bring it today?
Oh, I didn't bring it today.
So we can see everything you've done?
See, I mean, I have the studies, they're all studies, you need a program to run them. That's the programs that we use, all those models are, is what we upload to there. And so they have them too, so they can open them and see.
Who has?
The library. They see all those models, and that's how. And they're ongoing models, they're not finished. And so we show them what we have, but then, as we finish it, we update those models.
So you don't get the public involved, or like Haffin Associates? We met about three or four times, and we get together and we show them the problems in our precincts. You hang out with none of the commissioners?
Well, no, I mean, you know, I have individually sometimes, I've been working in Willacy County for thirty years. I know a lot of the issues that you'll have, having been around Willacy County.
Do you realize the new issues that we're gonna have?
Well, so, you know, the issues that you may have, you, you know, I haven't seen the cities grown. The urbanization has stayed the same. The infrastructure that we were involved with hasn't changed.
Well, I have two major issues in my precinct.
Okay, we can sit down and then talk about it.
Because...
I know.
One eighty-six is one of them. And the other one's a north drain. Because I know we did receive that money from the larger, from the store act. And Algo did it, and they cleaned up the ditch, which was a great idea. But now, they're cleaning up all their laterals, and they're adding more. So now, we're gonna get three times more water and a lot faster. So that cleaning of the ditch ain't gonna do us any good, not even Willacy County. Because we're gonna get a lot more water. And I've been saying that in the past. So that's a new problem we have, that we hadn't seen, thank God we haven't had a flood.
Well, that's something, that's something that the regional study, Commissioner has to study.
So I understand that.
Now, what I did do...
When I'm getting mad that we need individuals that are gonna stand for Willacy County. Because have you ever had a problem that he was, and he hasn't delivered yet?
Like I say, I have, I've been around Willacy County for thirty years.
And I know I'm not gonna be here long, I won't be here two more months, but I'm just letting you all know what you all gotta look out for.
But let me tell you what I did, and I can say it here. I actually took my survey crews, and, because I knew that they had done improvements to one eighty-six. And I had my survey crews go from Fort Mansfield all the way to the end of Willacy County. And we physically went and got elevations of all the culverts that they had updated and so forth for the, to put in the study, so that it can show me the true ways of how water is being held back. And then I can use that information to see how we can mitigate. So I knew this, Commissioner, maybe, I knew, you told me one time, and I saw it myself, that they were elevating the road. So I sent my survey crews to go and survey all of the whole road, how many miles. And they stopped at every new covert, and they got an elevation, and they got a cross-section, so that I know how high that road is, and all that information is in this model. So that model is being updated by me, by my knowledge of Willacy County, to make sure that the results I'm getting are more in tune with what we have there today. Now, I can't, you know, I can't predict what's gonna happen in five years if they decide to add another three feet of, you know, raise one eighty-six. But I took the elevations that are there now, and I did that because I knew that it impacts the flow coming from the south to the north, because I know that everything travels northeast to Willacy County. So when I saw those improvements, I sent my survey crews to go do that. And we did it just at four ninety also, and we did some of the other part of the market roads that we see in the improvements, so that we can know that this is a new elevation of these roads, so that we can put that information in the model. And that's the elevation model that I showed you there at the beginning. That elevation model has been updated with that information. So when the model runs, the flows is taken into consideration all those higher levels. I put in the railroad, I had my survey crews do all the railroad from the north to the south of Willacy County, so that we could get the right elevation of the railroad. Because I know that the water can't cross the railroad. But I know where the culverts are, the cross, and all that information is in the model. So all those things, there's a lot of details that, you know, I didn't explain, but I know as an engineer and as, you know, doing my study, that it makes my model more accurate by having that updated information. So that's what I've been doing in preparing this model. And that model will be updated to that point, and so everybody will have access to it.
And it will provide suggested improvement location?
Yeah, I think, first of all, I'm surprised as to how close your heart to the competition, right?
Second, it is, it is a little taxing, Judge, because we have to study each one, and then we have to change things. And sometimes, if we see the model not working the way we know it should be working, we have to modify it. That's my intention right now, and I obviously don't look at you on that if something changes. But everything is going in the right direction to, we're coming to a completion on this, because I wanna complete it too.
Yeah, well, what I was gonna add is that I know that historically, including the improvements of Rainbow Drain, you gotta probably had, I'm not for sure they had at least one. I know they had more than one public hearings, right, to hear from the public. But I think that this is already beyond that, right? But I think that we need to convey your, the results of the study to the stakeholders, in particular, the cities, and maybe in the communities of Lasada, South County, to where the study is shared by as many influential individuals as possible, right? So that, as an example, the cities can jump on, you know, their internal study, right? I'm sure they're already working on it, I know you mentioned the city of Rainbow already has that, to where we connect the dots and make it happen county-wide.
Oh, definitely, one of the close-up things that we have to do with this is, once we finish, we have to have a public hearing and present our findings to the public. And obviously, go to the county, setting that up, and we'll have it presented and everything.
More or less, one would be.
Well, that won't happen until they finish their review, and I hate to say it, but they're asking for eight months of review.
Oh, that...
The water don't work.
Well, after they review your submissions.
I gotta review everything, and like I say, they've got a lot of work. We're not the only watershed, that's what they told me to put in, on schedule. That they're gonna look at about eight months to review and obviously approve. During that time, if they want me to change anything, I'll change it. But that's the obligation that I've got. I'll ask them if I can have a preliminary public hearing to kind of just share the findings.
Say, what's your input as far as, should we wait for a public hearing after they approve it?
Well, I'll ask them, I'll ask them and see what, if it's okay to go ahead and do something before they approve it. I know there's only one other one that I know of that had been completed in the Brownsville area. And I don't know if they had a public hearing after they got it approved, or just before. The engineer, I don't know. But I'll ask the individual, the water don't work, see what he recommends, and I'll share with you.
Judge, I don't know, I know you mentioned too, Mr. Salinas, if you have comments about this presentation, if you might allow me the opportunity to ask questions.
Well, no, what I told him, I did even better.
Oh.
I told him I would get with him, and I say, I can't fault you, but if you have any questions, if you want to...
Oh, okay.
Or comments.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't move on to the other one without...
No, no, absolutely not.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there any other questions for, okay, thank you. Thank you, looking forward for the completion. Okay, so we can cheer.
So if we go back, I think the only section, the only section is for executive session, which you've already read it in. So you were going to, I think, ask for a motion to go into executive session?
Right, and I need to have a motion to go into executive session, it is eleven. So I'm gonna turn off this computer. So I want you to make a motion, let's see, I'll wait, in a second.
Okay.
They're rushing the files, saying, "Aye."
Aye.
Make sure that that thing is on.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Figuerina. All your favorite single properties say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same sign, motion carries. And so line item number twenty four, can I obtain a motion to take no action?
I move to take no action.
A and B.
Second.
Motion and a second, any more discretion? All your favorite single properties say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Can I obtain a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second by Commissioner Figuerina.